June 4th, 2019, Biloxi City Council Meeting. We're gonna start off with an invocation by Father Trung Tran from Silo's Catholic Church.
Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you on behalf of all members and people who gathered here this evening. We thank you for many blessings that you have bestowed upon each and every one of us. Thank you for our health, our families, our friends, and our loved ones, and life itself. Thank you for our ability to be involved in the civil work and works, for the honor of being elected and selected as member of our Biloxi City Council. We are asking you to be present with us in our meeting this evening. We thank you for our mayor. We pray for the various levels of the city officials and for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant us the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issue of our times, a sense of welfare and a true needs for our people, a keen thirst for justice, righteousness, and peace, the confidence in what is good and fitting for all, an ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, the personal peace in our lives and joy in our entrusted tasks. Please also give an assurance of what is good, what good pleased to you, and what is good benefit for our people who live and walk in and around our beloved city of Biloxi. I pray these in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Father. Mr. Lawrence, would you lead us in the place of allegiance?
Thank you, Father Tran. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. I need a motion to amend the agenda. Moved by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavin. Any questions? All in favor? Seven zero, motion carry. Ms. Lucy, could you read us our amendments?
To our routine agenda, we're adding Section 4 in the amount of $47,539.99. We're also adding a Section 5 in the amount of $4,823... Excuse me.
I need a motion to accept the agenda as amended. Moved by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavin. Any questions? No questions? All in favor? Seven zero, motion carry. Okay, we're gonna start off with the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to invite Antonio Wright with the Metro Area Community Empowerment to speak about the 44th Wheelchair Softball World Series.
Thank you. Thank you. So, thank you. My name is Antonio Wright. I represent MACE, Metro Area Community Empowerment. It is an organization that has started adaptive sports, motivation speaking, and youth mentoring. We started a organization called Deep South Hurricanes, which is a wheelchair softball team comprised of athletes from Mobile, from Mississippi, from New Orleans. We take wheelchair athletes and we put them all together. We started this around 2011. Now, we have taken these wheelchair athletes and we do go to wheelchair softball World Series and we competed all over the country in wheelchair softball. And we brought, 2015, we brought the wheelchair softball World Series to Biloxi. It was the first time it was in the South, and it was wonderful. The Boulevard was our host hotel. We brought over 18 teams here. It was amazing. However, Matt over at the convention center competed in one of our chairs, and he blew his mind. All of a sudden, all of the teams wanted to come back. It was the first time it ever came back to the South again. This time, we had 20 teams come back. We had over 28 states represented in the South. Over 400 people in wheelchairs came to Mississippi and competed in 2016. It was amazing. Our governor was here in 2015 throughout the first pitch. In 2016, remember, it was a... Remember the storm that was here? Do you remember how much rain it was in 2016? It was 62 matches in 2016, and only 60 of them was in the rain. Sideways rain. And all of these guys were in wheelchairs competing in the rain at that convention center. And the governor's wife was in the rain with a plastic bag over her head watching us and helping us out. It was amazing. This, that, two years have went by, and they want to come back to Mississippi. But this time, I do not want the Biloxi mayor and city council to miss out on this opportunity. I don't want you all to miss out on all this fun that we had. So this time, we want to invite you all to not only to be a part of this, but to experience this. So what am I asking? One, I want to challenge the mayor to come out first and throw out the first pitch. That's the first thing, okay? Number two, I want to challenge the city council to come out and compete in a... We're gonna call it a All-Star Exhibition. Just like Mr. Matt from the convention center, he got in a chair, and in the last day, he competed in an exhibition. So what we want to do is, is get some of the, some All-Stars from around the city, from the shuckers, from the police department, from the fire station, from you all, and put them in chairs and compete against some of the Japanese team. We have teams that are coming from three different countries, from 28 different states, from all over the world will be coming into Biloxi, Mississippi. And we want to get a chance to let everybody compete against them in the last day. And now, the third thing we're gonna ask is, in that exhibition, when you get a chance to play against us, we want to have that as a way to help us fundraise also. When you sit down, you will not only be competing, but you will also be helping us fundraise. That seat would be your, would be a chance to help us out with this opportunity. So, first of all, thank you all for allowing us to come and tell you about this. It's gonna be an amazing opportunity for the country again. The 2020 World Series, we're gonna, it's about to happen. We appreciate you again, and we want to inform you first because it's happening. And then, we definitely want your input, your time, and we want some effort, yes. Bless you. Thank you so much.
What's the date?
Oh, great. So it's August the... I guess you do need the date, don't you? I'm sorry.
That's okay. Listen, you need to loosen up too a little bit. You don't have enough enthusiasm.
I guess you can't tell by motivation speaker, huh? It is August the 6th, 7th, and 8th of 2020.
We'll get them there. We'll be there, and we'll get them there too.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me. Yes, sir.
Mr. Wright? Mr. Wright?
We got time to practice. We got a lot of time to practice. I have one question.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
One question. Are we getting free plastic bags or what? Free plastic bags?
We'll have to make sure you get a free plastic bag and a ticket, okay?
Councilman Lawrence likes paper. He likes paper.
Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wright. I will be in attendance, absolutely.
Couple of things to report on this time from my mayor's report. Conference USA was successful. USM won it. I think it brought the draw. I think Mike might want to add, I don't know, is it successful as it, I guess it's the best so far this time?
We told you ahead of time that we had a really good year, the first year, where we got certain tickets, dollars per ticket. The second year, when it rained and we had all the bad weather, we had a terrible year. Didn't hardly make any money at all. So this year, the city attorney and I worked a deal out with the overtime sports where we'd get a flat fee. Regardless of rain or shine, we were gonna get the same amount. Well, sadly, it shined and didn't rain, but we still, we still walk away with 25 grand, so... So I think we, I think we'd call that a successful tournament. And the Lord knows, it dragged a lot of people into this city.
Yeah, it did. Like I said, ESPN and some of the coverage.
Yeah, it was 15 games, 1,500, 22,500.
Right, 22,500.
And then they gave us a parking lot. Was that something unique? Did we ever use a parking lot for the tournament where you could charge?
There were some food vendors and that sort of thing in the parking lot, yes.
That was all part of that?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause that was the first time they ever let us actually use the parking lot.
Right, for that, for that food and beverage, other than, you know, what was already there. The other thing, as you might well know, your council was very much represented on that picture on the wall where we actually won Diabaville. You know, we beat Diabaville. I told them, in the great mayor's race, and they didn't know that it's not gonna be Diabaville anymore. It's gonna be... That's right. I told him the other day, it's gonna be not Diabaville anymore. It's gonna be North Biloxi, Wards 8 and Wards 9. He's still trying to figure that out, okay?
We kept Fofa away from the wheel. We did great.
That's it.
That was a good day.
I hung out around the beer chest with George, so, anyway. Well, it's good. But Bill Fisher's tournament's cranking up, and I think there's some crock of ball or something. Captains gathering today, but 100 boats, 115, I think is what it is. But that's cranking up, I think Thursday morning, it will be the official lineup and kickoff. We also, couple of things, I mean, what's the BMA, Ben's here to give us an update on how we're doing with regard to Keesler and Division Street ahead. Have a schedule and under budget or on budget? Have a schedule, something like that?
Yeah, Ben, come on up. Well, I wanted to do this for council today because we, as you know, we've got an inside-the-gate project that's going on, you know, inside the Keesler gate, and there's an outside-the-gate project. They're two different projects. There are two different funding streams. We can't mix the money. But we have done, our engineers have done some creative things with the two projects. Now I'll let Ben explain it.
All right, I'm gonna try to get this oriented so that we can see it.
If I want to hit the lights or something, maybe you see better. Got a little sunlight here.
Yeah, I don't know if I can get that out.
No, we'll turn it down a little bit.
Yeah, it's the sunlight.
How about that?
Yeah, that's good.
That's not my head.
No, or mine.
Okay, we got one of them lights up there.
All right, so as Mike mentioned, right now, as you guys are aware, we're in process and really close to finishing the inside-the-gate portion of the contract, which in the original bid documents kind of brought the road just outside the physical gate of Keesler there by Forest Avenue. We're, as Mike said, kind of, we're under budget, had a schedule by a few months, and we're trying to make sure we maximize the use of the money we got for the inside-the-gate portion of the project. And to make sure we can get better use of the money we've got allocated for the outside-the-gate portion. So what we've been able to do is negotiate expanding the scope of the project. And what you see here, hopefully, is what would, will be the new intersection at Division Street going on base and Forest Avenue, and that's a roundabout that through some design iterations, we'd all determined, working with Keesler, that was the best way to control that intersection for traffic coming north and south on Forest, as well as going east and west on and off base. So there's a proposed change order for consideration to include that scope of work that you see right there into the existing contract, where that would allow us to kind of keep using that money that we've got for the inside-the-gate portion of the project. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to...
I do have a question, Ben, if you don't mind.
Sure.
At that intersection, I know that Forest, there's a decline there.
To the south.
To the south, and then a little further south behind Desportes and some of the, you got that, I guess, that ravine, the concrete drainage structure there. And is that intersection there with the roundabout, is that gonna be elevated? And about how much higher would the elevation be than what it is now, roughly?
Roughly, the roadway will be about two feet higher than it is now. And we couldn't get it much higher than that because, it's kind of hard to see here, but that's the bridge that's there now. And we have to tie back in flush with that bridge at a certain grade of road, if you will, so that it's not too steep. And to make sure that as we go east along Division, that we still are able to navigate in and out of the properties that are on Division Street.
Okay, all right.
So about two feet higher, roughly? Yes, sir. Thank you.
So there's a bridge, isn't there? Full of the bridge at all right there?
No, sir.
So Forest, there'll be two-lane traffic?
Yes, sir.
Just coming off, Forest will be four lanes?
Two lanes in each direction, that's correct.
So the creative thing that they did for us is, we had two projects, one of which had the extra money in it, and the other one was short of money. We can't move the money, but we can move the work. So they're transferring some of the work from the project that is underfunded to the project that has extra funding, which is about a half a million dollar difference that we'll pick up, that we, rather than having to turn it in and not spend it, we can actually use it outside the gate this way.
We received all the money. We're supposed to, it was supposed to be a $30 million project.
That's right.
On the right-of-way, do you have a limited amount of money to spend on the right-of-way?
Well, we do. I mean, we've got a budget we're trying to hold. We're obviously in the middle of acquiring right-of-way. You know, that's always a challenge to try to make sure we work with all the people that own property there and make sure that we do that in a fair manner. So we are still pretty close to the original budget. We've, I think we've gone over in some areas and under in some areas, but we're doing our best. It's, but there are some definite challenges.
Anytime you deal with somebody else's property, it's always a challenge.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, 'cause it's your property.
Correct. That's exactly right.
And they didn't want to sell anyway.
That's right. So we definitely gotta be sensitive to that and make sure we treat everybody the same.
So sometimes you have to be a little generous. Not so much, but you know, when you disturb somebody's life, that's what you're doing.
That's exactly right. Thank you.
One more question, if I might, and then I'll be quiet on this topic. What's the approximate diameter of that roundabout?
115 feet. I figured I'd get that question.
You know I was gonna ask that.
Anytime we're doing roundabouts, that's always a question, so there you go.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I would ask the council to spread the travel expense on the Biloxi travel card, credit card, to the minutes, and that concludes my report.
All right, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, no departmental reports. I'm gonna move on to council reports. I'm gonna start with Mr. Barrett.
I have nothing today.
Mr. Glavin?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to call up Mr. Donnie Handler. We'd like to do a special presentation of Biloxi Police Department and note some fundraising activities that were done for the McKeithen family. Donnie? I'd just like to recognize a few folks. I'm gonna let Donnie talk a little bit about it because he did the heavy lifting for this event. But we did a ruck run from Margaritaville to the Lighthouse. We knelt there and did a prayer for the McKeithen family, and then we rucked it back to Margaritaville. There's a lot of people with Tunnels, Towers, Justin Lopez, the Biloxi Police Department, and many, many more. But again, this man right here, it was his idea, his brainchild. He put it together very rapidly, and we had a pretty good response. And I'll let him talk more about it.
No, I appreciate it, Kenny. It was just something I felt compelled. He used, he lived right one road behind me and used to actually pick on me for being a handler. People give me hard times sometimes, but anyway, a little inside joke. But a guy with Kenny wanted to do something, and we ended up having 134 people come out. We raised $2,143 in pretty much two hours. And somebody reached out to me on Facebook out of Gulfport and donated to me, donated this to us, and what we did is we laid it on the table, and everybody that participated, they signed a board, and we want to present it to Chief Miller, is what we want to do, so...
I want to say a couple more words too. If you don't know what a ruck run is, I know Chief Miller knows what it is and some of you military people. You put a backpack on your back with about 40 pounds, more or less, of weight. And so we ran, all I had was a Croatian flag with me. I didn't put the ruck pack on. But we ran all the way to Lighthouse, did the prayer. I'm running back, and this man passes me with 50 pounds of weights on, and he tore... What did you do? You tore some ligaments in your ankle or knee or whatever, just about six weeks ago, and he's huffing and puffing and just did it on pure adrenaline. So congratulations. We got a check for 2,300-plus dollars, and we still got a few donations trickling in. But it's very moving, and in addition, his daughter, I'll just add this too, Gracie, competed for Shrimp Queen. She was a top finalist, and she, I think she sold the most ads too for that thing. But anyway, this is all about all y'all's hard work. Thank you. And the only other thing I have, Biloxi All-Stars is kicking off. I think our 9-and-under in Long Beach won the tournament. But we have all our All-Stars that are competing throughout the summer for the next several weeks. So if you get a chance to support those kids, that's a great thing too. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Glavin. Dr. Sessell?
Yeah, a couple of questions, Mayor, Mr. Leonard. I know that, are we collecting any rent on the ground floor of the library there? Are we collecting anything yet?
Yes, we are, and have been for the last eight months.
Good, okay, I thought we were. And our rent doubles at the federal building in December, excuse me, October, I think, roughly from...
Square foot, too. So I mean, so is the square foot, so we get, you know.
Right, okay. I just, I know that's gonna be a budgeting item as well. There's really, I don't know who to ask. Residents can pay their water bill online. Is that the only utility they can pay online? Or do we offer other services?
Well, they can do it through a bank draft. A bank draft, but not online, which is what the commercial services.
Okay, all right, so we don't, so we don't have any commercial services available?
Use PayPal to pay a check.
Right. I got you. Okay, do we have any plans to look at something like that? That's what I would've said. We're looking at it, okay. You're making a good, you're making a good debt. I got you. All right. The only other thing I want to say is Public Works, I just see these guys out in the heat. I don't know if Mr. Allen's here or not.
He was, he was out in the heat today, so I gave him off.
Okay. Well, let me tell you, at least in my ward, when I'm outing around, I see them, they're hustling. They're on the goes anyway, and I know it's hot. I just appreciate them and want to thank, want to thank them for that. Thank you. And that concludes my comment.
Thank you, Dr. Sessell. Mr. DeBby?
Yes, first, I want to apologize for missing the special meeting earlier. I was out of town at my daughter's senior class trip. We were in Miami and Dominican Republic. I just flew in today, and boy, are my arms tired. All that said, again, I know the meeting today was for a very important topic, and I'm sorry that I was, I was late and wasn't able to make it. However, I will be seeking counsel of Ms. Newman, who is the councilman for that ward. And I would love to hear from anyone else that wants to speak with me about it. Contact me, email me, talk to me after this meeting. Tell your neighbors if they want to get their word in with me. I'm having a ward meeting next Thursday on the 13th. Feel free to come. I know you're not part of that ward if you live in her ward, but we'd be, I'd welcome your attendance to hear your thoughts and comments on that project. Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeBby. Mr. Newman?
Yes, I would like for the mayor and my colleagues to consider us bringing back up the panhandling ordinance as the homeless have obviously, it's been a huge increase in the panhandling since we approved this ordinance. And it also seems like there's no positive side to allowing this ordinance, and it's been only causing more of an issue and no solution. So I would urge y'all to bring this back up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. And Mr. Lawrence?
They had a couple of big events this week. I don't know if anybody passed the finish line, the little race car. They must've brought a thousand of them things in. They raced all day long. It must've been part of a tour.
It is part of the circuit, right.
And I'm telling you what, that was pretty awesome. They filled that whole area up. So that's one... Right, and I think they brought them in and trailers and that. I mean, that was mighty fine. We talked about these boats, but that was pretty interesting to see that many.
And it is, people with some expensive toys on a fort, I think, in Miami. Some in Canada, Las Vegas, and of course, your friends.
We wrestled it away from New Orleans, so last year the event was...
They thought it was gonna take them three years to get that kind of, that particular one. It's a, it's a pretty unique kind of circumstances, but it was really good.
So they had a tight traffic, well, that's a good problem. That was a good problem. We also had the Blessing Fleet this weekend. It went well, great weather, you know. There's a limited amount of the small luggers in that just left, but they probably had a dozen boats out there, the old type, you know, depending to me, to the big, the 100-foot slab, we call them. But they opened their season, and Texas, most of them was gone anyway. 'Cause they go out there a week or so before they start catching. So that was a good thing.
Hey, George, I just want to comment on Blessing the Fleet. 1979, there were over 3,000 boats on the water for the blessing. It's dwindled. It's, I mean, it's great to still see that we're doing the event, but I mean, there's probably a couple dozen boats, shrimp boats, this year. But 1979, there were over 3,000 boats that were on the water.
Yeah, in 1979, they had 100-foot shrimp boats either.
Yeah, I know.
So they've taken over. Those are floating factories. That's a different world. That's a different world. They can't compete now with the smaller boats, you know? It's just a big, it's a big difference. Also, last night, they opened the 50-year for the Camille at the Seaview Museum. That's quite an exhibit, you know? A lot of people talking about Katrina, but I mean, Camille was the first thing that messed it up, 50 years ago. You know, we floated around in a house back then, and Katrina, there wasn't a house to float around in. But we survived that one. But that's, that's something everybody should go see. That's part of this city. Just like the 47 Hurricane, they changed. Everything changed after one of the major hurricanes. You know, and then what Katrina did, Katrina pretty much destroyed everything. But I mean, each one makes a difference. So to go there and back and look at the past, that's pretty good. That's pretty interesting. They also had the Bill Fisher Tournament this weekend. Thursday morning, 11 o'clock, you want to see about $300 million worth of boats go by your yard? Got there and checked it out. I mean, these boats are two, three million, some of them 15, 20 million. They out here playing games, catching something. It's 6,500 in Calcutta. I guess y'all should know where the Calcutta is, but anyway.
They got good electrical service there now, too.
The what?
They got good 200-amp electrical service there.
Right, and you know, we saw it last year. The Fofa and I trying to get Governor Brian and people in the state to expand the point of that harbor. Because you could probably double the size of these boats. They're only up to 2.5 million giveaway. The top in the world is 5 million. If we had the space and the harbor... top in the world is five million, if we had the space and the harbor, I mean, we could probably be the number one destination in the world for this Billfish Tournament, I mean, they win two hundred thousand and two hundred fifty thousand each catch, but it's not that, these guys have so much money, they spend a ton of money, and I talked to one guy from Texas, he said, you know, there's nothing better than Biloxi, when you walk off your boat into a casino, he said, he said, you can't find it any way else in the world, but I mean, we have to upgrade the harbors to get the bigger boats and everything, and when you start bringing them ninety-two foot Vikings, they're thirty million each, you don't want to hit the wall, you want enough room for them to come through there, because we can't afford the insurance on that thing.
Somebody else had a sixtieth class reunion, too, didn't you?
Sixty, yeah, we did that, too, and I tell you, we did everything in Biloxi, we went to the French Club, we went to the Fado Dome, and we ate brunch at the patio forty-four, we stayed in Biloxi, I was amazed, and there was still a lot of them that was still alive, I'm proud of them. We're a bunch of old people, you know, and the only thing I wanted to ask Chief Miller that.
They're still breathing, they're still breathing.
Yeah, we, we out there boogied them, we boogied. Did you get anything adjusted with White Avenue, we had a lot of complaints, I told you about that, that's something you had done today, because just like these people come from the other side of town, going to White Avenue between four and five is tough.
Irish Hill, too, was really closed in the last three days, so I mean, you couldn't use the highway.
Same to Highway ninety.
Think they were going deep with regard to sewer.
Yeah, might come to just direct traffic yourself, because once you get it moving, it's not that, it's, like you said, it's about an hour, hour and fifteen minutes, but it kind of, people call all the time, say they can't get to White Avenue, I said, well, you know, and though Irish Hill right now is, that's it, y'all come off Keystone, everybody's on Highway ninety, that's the only shot you have. Yeah. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Demming, you have one more thing?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I meant to ask this during my, my time, but I got some laughter, and that threw me off. Mr. Mayor, can you give us a report on any progress, on any measures regarding the negative impact of the spillway?
Yeah, we got, we got some, some things in motion with regard to commerce in DC, and supposedly, some folks from the Corps of Engineers will be there, if we can arrange, but you know, that, that's it, we've got, you know, we've been doing a lot of interviews, and some people from Baton Rouge and so forth, but we do, you know, the attention that we need, and again, as was said, is that it's only harm, we get no benefit from the spillway water, the river water that's being delivered, I think another four more dolphins washed up, washed up in the last few days, and Morgana, I think is the Morgana spillway, which is a little bit north of Baton Rouge, but to the Chaffalaya, will offload us some of the, some of the volume, but you know, the questions we have are numerous, and we just need to, I don't know whether it's gonna be, you know, what we can do in this next thirty or forty days where we think that's gonna be open, but you know, we've got to have a long range plan, and to get to the, you know, there were three areas of Army Corps of Engineers, I think in Vicksburg, Mobile, which handles us, and then as well as New Orleans, we need to get some attention and ask to be, again, considered, and to, you know, it's a measurement, you got to keep the, the parts per thousand around, you know, livable measures, I think right now we're at one and two, in some places none.
None.
And it needs to be twenty or twenty-two, so we know what we need to do, seems that we could get a solution to, to reservoir it up, release it a little bit at a time, you know, so we have plenty of questions, and what we got to figure out, like you said, who to ask it to.
Well, let me ask you this, what about the impact to our economy? I know that I've seen some of the oyster farmers and some of the other people that work in that industry have complained about the impact that it's had on them.
The oysters, they're done, it seemed like, you know, with, with regard to that volume, the crab, I think in, in some of the scientists Gulf Coast Research Lab, as well as the MR, you know, crabs, blue crabs, thirty-five percent down, that was just the other day, I'm sure it's gonna be more, I mean, again, there's nothing, you know, nothing positive out of it.
Well, this is, this is, this is an impact caused by the actions of another state.
That's right.
I mean, so have we thought about?
Well, yeah, absolutely, you know, we got to go, you know, I talked to Cindy Hyde Smith this, this last few days, and so I think their awareness was, as well as Senator Wicker, so, and again, some of our connections in DC through lobbyists and that sort of thing, we'll get everybody together at a table and see if we can get some attention, and you know, again, I don't know what we can do this year, because we're probably thirty or forty more days of this, I don't, you know, the weather's still acting up, and a big chunk of the United States, you know, drains into the Mississippi system, Arkansas, you know, some of their failing levees are failing right now, and they're gonna find its way, even in the Delta, talking today, there's a lot of water, can it find itself, you know, because it's already flooded, and it can't find itself back into the Mississippi River, but it's got to go somewhere, so there are a lot of conditions, and again, a lot of questions, let's see if we can, you know, hammer out, at least get some attention.
Thank you.
Let me tell you, Robert, the other problem, they had all the, the oysters they was cultivating, the second day it was all gone, killed every one of them.
Eighty-five percent is what I thought.
And they just wiped out that, all of them outside of Deey Island, went to zero salinity, they all done, just wiped them out completely, the B and M that runs all that, lost every one of them, that's how bad it is.
And the tourism situation, with these things, all the press that, you know, gets out, you know, it's, it's only negative, nothing positive out of it.
Well, that's why I bring it up, I mean, it's gonna be a considerable impact to our economy, I mean, it might rival what we dealt with, with the BP issue, so you know, it's huge.
Okay, thank you, and I have nothing more, I'm having a council award meeting the twentieth of this month, June twentieth, at five thirty, at the Frank Gruish Community Center. That concludes the council report, I'm gonna move on to public agenda, and right after, right after that, I'm gonna be going into, we're gonna be going into executive session. Okay, public agenda, citizen comments, total allotted time forty-five minutes, three minutes per person, I'm gonna ask anyone on my left, would you like to come up and have a few words? Anyone on my left, I'd like to come up and speak. Okay, I'm gonna switch to my right, anyone on my right? Citizen comments.
I just want to speak to y'all in reference to the development forum that we're doing on Tuesday, June eleventh, it's gonna be from eight AM to twelve PM, so basically, the intent of the forum is to bring developers, bankers, commercial brokers, anybody you can think of under one roof, see if we can network them, get some sort of catalyst for development on Howard Avenue in the downtown area. So we're gonna have Lee Young speak first on the, on the district development, then we're gonna have Lolly Barnes speak on historic tax credits, and then we'll have MDA speak on starting a small business, and we'll round out with Kim Fritz, who's been gracious enough, she's gonna speak on the abatements and the grants, and then take us off for a tour on their property. Anybody that you know that could be a vendor, or that could be help in this process, we'd appreciate it, I have flyers and vendor applications, thank you.
What's the location?
Oh, I'm sorry, the Civic Center in Biloxi, again, that's June eleventh, eight AM to twelve PM, everybody's invited, you can come as an attendee, or you can come as a vendor, thank y'all.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Felch. Is there anyone else would like to make any comments, did I miss anyone? Speak now, favor, hold your peace. Okay, we're gonna conclude public agenda, citizen comments, we're gonna go into the executive session. Okay, I need a motion on going in the executive session. Moved by Mr. Lawrence, we need, we got a motion to go in for the purpose of examining the necessity to go in the executive, executive session for litigation, for. Discuss your new, new business.
The clerk has a question.
The motion first needs to go into closed session to discuss the necessity, and you come out, and then.
Okay, moved by Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Lawrence moved it, need a second, second by Mr. Barrett, any questions? All in favor? Okay, six one. Need a motion on the council to conclude.
The mood.
To come out?
Come out of it.
Okay, I'm going into my purpose of going in, to close, reconvene, to come out of the executive session.
The mood.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Barrett, any questions, all in favor?
You know what we asked.
Okay, six one, Mr. Demming in opposition, one more?
Now we go into executive.
Okay, motion to go into executive session. Moved by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Barrett, any questions, all in favor, six one. All right, well, let's go into the executive session, so there's one more left, I know.